Nothing on my ceiling and we're just cleaning it.
Okay, uh, six o'clock, uh, first order of business is the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys get the best camera.
Yeah, like it comes.
We want to approve the minutes of October 2nd.
So.
Second, a motion of second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'm just gonna stay because I wasn't here.
Okay, so thanks everybody who else is standing. Uh, members of ports, start with Lindsay.
Um, I just had like I had questions asked about um rabies clinics and spam and everything, so if we could kind of put that on the radar or something that we either can facilitate or help out with that, would be great.
Good. Uh, wrong?
Nothing?
Chucky?
No, nothing worth repeating.
Okay, right on, Kelsey? All right, and nothing I can remember either, so we'll dive right into the town manager's report.
So, uh, a couple of things right out of the gate, not really business related, but on behalf of myself and my family, thank you to you folks and the staff and townsfolk for the floral arrangement that you sent, uh, last week, it was appreciated. Uh, lighter note, welcome baby Bickford, uh, came in after our last meeting, sage quarter, so the favor of three of the two pups, healthy and doing well, so excited for you folks there. Uh, the insurance company has reevaluated, uh, our sewer plant and associated equipment and infrastructure, and as a result has increased their replacement value, uh, from three million to eight million, and then sent us a supplemental bill, a supplemental bill for three thousand dollars. So, that is unfortunately better aligned with, you know, what value we need to be insured at, but it's an extra three thousand dollars, and quite frankly, the sewer department largely doesn't have, um, not that they're broke, uh, or in the hole, but, um, that makes it very, very tight, and we'll be looking at their numbers coming into do there. Uh, town office hours, a little bit different here, on the thirty first, we're open until seven, that preempts the, um, election on that Tuesday, that's the extra hour of voter registration that's required, will be closed on Tuesday, everybody's going over the election, and then the following Monday, Veterans Day will be closed as well. Absentee ballots are available now, all go online, stop by. Uh, as of this morning, thirteen percent of registered voters in town had already, uh, requested their absentees, and a large number of those have already been returned, I'd say we're over ten percent returned already for registered voters, so, um, it's been crazy busy, we appreciate your patience, uh, on that. And I don't think it's in here, but, uh, one of the other things I'll thank folks for being patient with in advance is a new dog licensing system, which I'm working with the head of the animal welfare department and their supervisor with this new program that they've implemented, they just implemented it with no live training, and the training that they did offer didn't allow Q and A, uh, it takes about twenty minutes to license a dog. And so we are not offering that service right now, uh, so, uh, we'll announce that at a later date, but that's coming, uh, hopefully with some adjustments from, uh, D A C F there. First grade civics, uh, three first grade classes came over from Mill Street yesterday, we talked them about elections, trying to dumb down the two party system to a bunch of six year olds, but I think we did it, um, and then they got to vote for president, um, in each of their classes, so that was kind of an interesting interaction, to say the least. Um, but nonetheless, I think they all enjoyed it, they got to go to the new voting booths, we put it in the wooden box, they got them out, they counted them, got their sticker, went on their way, um, but that was a good part of yesterday morning, and I think the teachers are gonna do it again next year, just on a looser, uh, less contentious election cycle. The community engagement position, that's the position that you folks have been working on, we kicked that off the TIF committee. Uh, I'm working on, I've advertised for folks that are interested in being members of the working group to take a look at that, flush through some things, look at the contents of the job description, your wages, and earn that back here, largely decentralizing the development and finalization of that position. If anybody's interested, please reach out with them the next week, because I'm gonna be finalizing that. I have two people that are in place right now, um, one represents parks, one represents the TIF. Um, anybody on the red committee, great, or just a general member of the public, we'd love to have, reach out and we'll get you included on those, I'm expecting two or three meetings at most, so that we can get that, um, ahead of town meeting prep. Trucker tree is the twenty sixth of Mill Street, five to seven, we'll still take the candid donations here, um, for that. Fire department is either on our behalf. The accessible and inclusive playground equipment, I don't have pictures for you, because they weren't very quality and I haven't been done myself, but that has been installed. And so the cost of installing that, uh, well, the scope of installing that was beyond what we have internally, so we outsourced it. It was almost ten thousand dollars to install that equipment, because it required a full deep excavation, it required, uh, you know, foundation work, there's, let's see. It was, it was three full days, it was three full days of it, okay? And so, there was the merry around thing, and that had to have a full depth excavation, and then they had to have layers and a slab and everything else. Then we had, um, the new swing set, the wheelchair swing set went in, um, and it was pretty intensive, and then once you take all that equipment and you've got to work your way back out.
Oh, okay, I, I feel better, I, I was, yeah.
Yeah, so Usul Park is kind of a mess right now, um, but it is what it is, and that playground equipment's in place, so once that looks a little bit better, uh, obviously we'll be advertising that, but New Balance from those get go said that they were willing to step up and support everything. So, they've already given us twenty thousand, they're committed another seventy-five hundred, which is not gonna be what we need, it's gonna be more, and they've said just put it into an account to help that area improve, so we'll have signage made for this added equipment, and then we'll do some sort of a ribbon cutting down the line. Uh, speaking of ribbon cutting, I should have included that in here, on November the first, we'll cycle that out online, uh, on the website, on Facebook, but November the first, the first grade class at Mill Street was donating one of those, um, community mini library book boxes. Give a book, take a book, and they're all supposed to be bringing a book in, and we're gonna place it at Emery Square. And so they wanna have the kids go down and have a ribbon cutting, so that'll be on November the first.
Do you have the time?
I don't, I think it's gonna be one o'clock in the afternoon though.
Are they gearing it towards like for like kids books, I mean, okay, so do they need donations for that now, or?
And I think right now the goal is to have the kids each bring a book.
Okay.
Through what means, I'm not sure, but that's their goal right out of the gate. We're gonna take care of the installation for them, and then they'll take them to public works and follow, and then allow the kids to come down and take them to the.
Okay.
So, uh, regional animal control, we have actually County Commissioner Robert Cisak with us here tonight, I did not know he was coming till late this afternoon, uh, but welcome first and thank you, um, he has been an integral part of a couple of grants that have been coming through town. Sports was association, we're able to secure a matching, uh, grant for trail signage in and around Fairfield, Norad, Watkin, Madison. Uh, he was an advocate for that project, and most recently remembered the, uh, side by side for the fire department. Commissioner Cisak was the real front runner for that, it was an uphill battle, and that saw its way through, um, as he's the chair of the commission, so we appreciate that, most recently has been the animal control issue. This board's expectation that we would see more and more coordination, so the letter that you sent went to the county and it was received. It was received by a number of communities, it received letters of support, very importantly from town of Fairfield, um, but then it also received the commission's support for bigger committee, so we had our first committee meeting today, um, and it was interesting. I think the consensus of the room with one exception was that we have a problem, and we wanna work together to fix it, so it's a matter of, do we want to have full-time positions at county level? Do you wanna have a pool of people at the county level to pull from? Uh, there's, there's probably half a dozen different scenarios, mixes here and there, and how do you wanna see that go? And then what the funding mechanism would be, is it a per diem, is it a send it to appropriations and just tax everybody for? Um, there's a position from all sides that you can make the case for, but I don't think you can make the case, as one tried to do today, that there is not a problem, or let's just ignore it. So, um, that was today, I think it was very productive, uh, in terms of our first meeting, and we're probably gonna meet again in another month or so, but it's definitely something that our Commissioner Cisak and Also are, uh, cognitive of and want to help us with, so, um, it was very, very good to see a responsive county government, uh, in and to, so, uh, thank you for that. File roll stabilization, uh, project, which is also lane restoration, uh, is underway, that road will be closed for two to three weeks in and around Twin Oaks Drive, which is a little dead end stuff, uh, but nonetheless, it will cause detour for some. Holidays roll, Saturday, December the fourteenth, uh, if you are interested in any way, business or organization or individual that would like to participate, please reach out to the town office, call or email me, and then your upcoming board meeting schedule, uh, you have there. The only thing I think that's gonna change is your TIF committee meeting for next Tuesday, I expect will be postponed or canceled.
Well, the file rolls closing, school bus know.
They were the first call I made as soon as I got the shutdown, and they also thanked town of Norad Rock, they did one on the town, and then notified some proposals.
Excellent, thank you.
And it went out by, uh, text service, which I renewed, it was two thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yeah. Excellent, all right, thank you. Uh, number six, uh, discussion action on October sixteenth, general warrant, number eighteen.
I move that we approve general warrant number eighteen in the amount of one million seventy-two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
It's a good way to have a response account.
Yes.
So, a motion of second, uh, any discussion? Was that like, is that a trash?
Allied equipment is the new, sorry, the new sidewalk machine.
Okay.
The multi-use machine was delivered, and staff have been trained on that, so we take and deliver that and we'll check.
Wow, that's fast.
Not bad at all.
It was, yeah.
How many more, uh, like payments for like the salt, I feel like we just approved some, is this another?
Yeah, so you're gonna pay salt, again, probably, hopefully, in two more months, and then you'll pay them on every bill until spring. This is from our salt pile, so we loaded in all the salt, and we pre-mixed a lot of it.
Okay.
Yep.
And is mainly installed, is that what the playground, is that what that was for?
No, mainly installed is the company that we hired to install and remove the swim docks down to Usul Park.
So that's gonna be for install and takeout each year?
So, I'm working with the vendor that sold us the docks, which is supposedly gonna be offering the service themselves after, I don't wanna get into this too deep. They had an issue with this subcontractor that they recommended to us, and now the subcontractor's striking us three thousand dollars, what do you do? I don't know, but I gotta go back to the dock vendor who said that they'd offer us install and remove the service and see what they were trying to.
Yeah, it's like a six thousand dollar annual, like, in and out.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
I was calling Doc's Army today. What? Yeah. How would you do it, Bob? You did? Uh, no, not on one dock, no, I know today, but not on one dock.
Um, so we've got the thirteen five for Bigger's and Yard Mace, is that like the remainder of our mowing contract, or is that different?
That's a chunk of mowing contract, and then they were the ones that were able to install the park, so that was the, that, they're the ones that did the work in the park. We would get contacted, loose, we contacted Albert, we contacted somebody else, and they were the only ones that could get it done this fall.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Uh, let's see, uh, number eight, special action on October sixteenth, sewer pump.
Slur Airport.
Oh, sorry, yeah, missed that, airport, uh, warrant number ten.
I need to approve warrant number ten, the airport in the amount of six thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second, motion of second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody. Now what we need, sewer commitment.
Want to approve the sewer commitment in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and three dollars and thirty cents.
Motion of a, second, uh, any discussion?
Is that higher than the one we was, is it normally that much?
Between two thousand?
Yeah.
Uh, it depends on the billing cycle.
Okay, okay.
Is it about, you go for book, is it?
That's just book one.
Okay, I feel like it's usually not that high numbers.
It's, it's a large number of bills that go out.
Okay.
But it's, uh, controlled usage largely, I'm not even thinking about big stuff. I didn't, yeah. It's anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five thousand.
And he's one, right?
Yeah, can we build one?
Oh, bills, is it?
Right, it's quarterly bills, so every spring wants to see it again.
Yeah.
So this is also summer usage, so people will get pulled in.
No, it just, everybody.
Only this month, no, sorry, no grid users there. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody. Uh, number nine, public comment. Oh, oh, we got a hand there, Mike.
Nice to see baby Bickford in here registering his first vehicle this afternoon, responsible parent. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I submitted my bid today again.
Four on?
Taking that speed bump on one second, Goss, the current sound, or.
Okay, either that one will go out or another one will go in, it's either or, you know?
Put it somewhere else, I don't care, take that one, you can put it on your street.
Yes, as my role could use it, but anything else from the public?
I can argue with that.
All right. Moving forward. Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Robert Cisak, I live in Fairfield, I'm your country commissioner, I'm the mayor of Fairfield with George Walk. And, uh, we did get the letters, we got the supporting letter from Fairfield as well, we're very interested in helping resolve the situation. It is going to be an arduous way of progress, because there are so many different models to look at, and thank you, Richard, for being at the meeting today. A, a big help, and we saw all spectrums, including no problem, but we know there's a problem, so we're moving forward, and, uh, letting you know that I'm working with you in the forties.
Thank you, and anything unique from us, please, you're at your disposal.
We'll stay in contact when we're there.
Okay, uh, number ten, public hearing on proposed uses for twenty-two residential property. Anything on the? Uh, no, we're just, we're taking. Yeah, yeah, still in discussion, a lot of good ideas on it, pickleball, library, uh, blocking, uh, please, Mr. Keister.
Uh, I have one, uh, question about that, uh, the pickleball, which, I mean, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, what about the parking?
Well, that was, that was actually a part of the discussion.
Okay, because, you know, is it gonna be the school during school hours, okay? Or even if you, uh, there was questions about putting the library up there where you park again and stuff like that here, okay?
Yeah.
There's this pickleball, this big one in the road, you know, you know what I mean, somebody hits it and it goes out in the road, and then, okay, I'm just looking at a safety issue or something like that here.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Exactly, I wanna be looked over the overall picture of that, and I guess if I don't play, I don't care, you know, what you do, I was just kinda concerned about the parking, okay, and where, you know, these things might end up, you know, or, you know, access. You know, if somebody has to play, let's say it's an older group of people wanna play, and they gotta park all the way down to the library, okay?
Right.
Then you gotta walk all the way up there, stuff like that, but that's just one concern I was.
No, right on, uh, par- parking and, uh, how much or how, yeah, it's really been a large part of the discussion, regardless of what goes.
What does that, the court size, is it, you know, is it a, a blacktop court, is it, you know, just a, uh?
For pickleball, they are, I, I believe the, they're, they're smaller than a tennis court.
Yeah, one time, I'm sure you all remember this, is when we used to have tennis courts down there, right?
Oh, really?
Oh, you don't remember?
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, I do, yes, I do. That's right, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, I, I answered my question, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
We never wanted one, you took the ice skating.
Yeah, I do remember that, yep, uh, anything else on the commercial property?
If you do.
Uh, right behind you, Ruth, please.
I just wondered, uh, does anybody know, shouldn't put in the food pantry there?
I think, I think it's come up, I'm not entirely sure, uh, in our meetings, the short answer is no, in the survey, I've had four respondents say a food pantry in or resource center, so, um, you know, holding our kitty cat connections, things like that.
And, uh, my other thing is, why couldn't a pickleball court be put down by the library where the basketball court is?
Well, that's a, that's a very good point.
We don't know where the basketball, that's part of the school's property, isn't it, the basketball court, you know, the schools?
That's, that's actually been brought up, um, so there's really a lot of different scenarios that have been brought forward, uh, that really all are, are good, uh, but that one in particular, it's a toss-up.
I know we talked about, or people were talking about putting the library there, but I, that's a third of an acre, and I don't know, that trailer, I can't remember, would it be?
Oh, uh, well, I know, I don't wanna misspeak and get myself in trouble, but I can assure you that if we do a library, it won't be a trailer.
Okay.
And won't be that one that sits there now.
Well, that was quite old, to start with, when it was.
We get, that was a, well, it was a gift from the school district.
I remember when we passed that, many, many years ago, that was.
It was controversial when it went in, that's one of the reasons I'm on this board now, exactly, yeah, it was supposed to be temporary, and it was, it was a gift from the school, because it would cause the school more to move it than it was for value.
On the note of the library, if you were to use that property for the library, how big a building would you be? Because, because I'm just looking at how much you need.
It's a, it's a toss-up, right, it could be, you're filling the lot, it could be something small, it would really come around to.
Almost, you could have parking, have a few bathrooms access to.
A, a lot of things, and really, a, a lot of people have had some great ideas that really we wouldn't even have thought of, really is the point of these public hearings, to bring this stuff to light before the planning stage even begins, uh, to really feel where the public is, uh, and what's the best use of it? Because really, they're all great things, uh, and we certainly are in, I don't wanna say it that poorly, uh, we're in need of a, uh, brick and mortar building for the library, so that they're not.
What year was that donated?
Kids, my kids, my.
It was before the new schools, brilliant, we get this for the new schools, brilliant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's been there a minute.
I think.
You're not.
I think you're looking at mid-two thousands.
Yes.
Like twelve-five or something.
I was gonna say, I've been here since a week, it's always been there since I've been here.
Really?
It's close to twenty years now.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, like you said, it was supposed to be temporarily in, and those buildings were, had some age on them before they got here.
I think if the town was to erect something, then we would do something that was, uh.
How big would you require, I mean, is that?
This is tough, that would be a discussion, library trustees and how much they could use, you don't wanna give them something bigger than they need, but at the same times, you don't wanna work too small.
You don't wanna expand later.
Right, right, I, and, uh, we're fortunate, I mean, libraries are kind of a dying thing, but we're lucky that in our town, it seems to be the highest numbers it's ever had, so I, I, I think it would be a great opportunity to support the library, uh, if the majority goes that way, uh, I certainly can get behind it being a library or a pickleball court, so there's really a lot of options there.
One other option, if somebody offers you more money than what you, we paid for it, or you jump on that?
No.
Or not?
I, oh, well, I'm only speaking for myself, it would be a hard decision.
If somebody offered you a hundred thousand or two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, they had it.
Right, that's a little excessive, but yeah. Uh, that, that's a, that's a good question.
No, I'm just wondering if that ever comes up, or, or you can notice that, or notice that, is that an offer?
That's tough, that's tough, uh, the, the board would certainly look at any reason or off, yeah, yeah.
Why, you've got something in mind?
Right.
Not yet.
Has anybody, has anybody got it?
Geez, okay, okay, anything else on, uh, thank you, and Mike, well, thank you too, uh, anything else on the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just, I did a preliminary call for what we received from survey feedback, and it's just that it's preliminary, and it just dropped a newsletter this week, so I can tell you right now, the top trending item, it's either loved or hated, is parking for the school.
Absolutely.
But one in three are saying parking for the school, and the next one is move the library there. Whether it's move the library there, because the library is insufficient, or the library is too small, or the library is in the wrong place. Uh, where, what I'm hearing in these, reading in these, is move the library, put pickleball where the library is, and move library up. There's a good number of those.
The only other comment I have on that is on the parking issue, can you, until this is resolved officially and put a designation, designate something to be having there, it is a parking lot, can they use it now, is it, is it, would it be able to be used as a parking lot over full parking lot for school now, as a temporary basis, do you get a more permanent fixture there? Well, I just, yeah, I just, I know what's changing up now, but just being on a temporary basis, where the holidays coming up, stuff like that, would it be accessible to the top, to, to the people that wanna use it, is it gonna be?
So, I had somebody that gave me some feedback for the first public hearing, and that was, that if this lot is converted into public parking, especially school overflow parking or rec overflow parking, it is a drop in the ocean for impact.
Yeah.
Would we safely able to get in and out?
True.
So I'm not gonna go to the insurance company and ask them to ensure that lot for public parking, and I'm not gonna go to DOT and say we're gonna have regularly moving traffic.
David, don't do that. Fair enough, so there's a budget, you just pump that, okay, I just know that.
You use car law projects for vacant lot, so we're, we're, if we're gonna change the purpose of that lot, then I'm gonna go to DOT and say the number's coming in and out of that, and very likely, we're gonna cause more of a safety issue by having that regular traffic come in and out because of its close parking to the school exit.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
To fit ten cars, I agree, yeah.
Fair enough, I, I just. It'll hurt you so.
To Mr. Keister's point, I did have somebody say sell it with restrictions and a profit, dot, 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 and put the money into pavement, but, um, we've got tennis and pickleball, we've got green space or park, we've got leave it empty so that you can have farmers markets, pop-up shops, open space, we've got community gardens and greenhouses, outdoor learning space, skate park, multi-use courts, food pantries, rec center, dog park, car wash with pressure wash, not for cars, but for altering vehicles, uh, housing, walking track, a pool or a splash pad, um, or a public garage where we would have a lift and allow people to go in there and work on their own equipment.
That sounds like. All kinds of different ideas there.
I know the people are flexing their creativity, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know, you're, you're off in the shop, you don't change minds.
So, uh, your next regular meeting will be in November, at which point in time I think we'll have a public hearing session, and then it'll turn into a discussion action of the board's, uh, area, so there's none of that anymore, that the board can then maybe narrow it down to one or two.
Is, is this, I'm trying to get it ready for town meeting? Oh, Jesus, fund duration.
Maybe, it's maybe, that's, that's a maybe, right?
I don't, I don't know, we just, time.
Plausible.
We're just.
It, it largely depends, like, obviously, if it's a farmer's market or pop-up space, yeah, of course it's gonna be ready for town meeting, right?
No, 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 it's the decisions that you make, I don't.
It depends on, I think, what the ultimate use is gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, probably. Uh, Peter, good.
One thing I just thought of is people talking about the library currently in the wrong place, whether it's parking, whatever. I, I don't know whether DOT or somebody has to do a study on that road, uh, if you put anything in that lot, I don't know how easy it is to get in and out of traffic, right there, when that's more difficult than now at the library, at least at the library, you can, bazoo, turn around in a parking lot, go out to the school if you need to.
That, really.
Unless there's a, unless there's a way to make a driveway accessing the school entrance, uh, instead of going out onto the main road, but.
Yeah, that one. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else from the public, anything else from the board?
The only thing I had asked, um, you know, like, my kids are obviously a lot younger than the ones that are like, you know, putting them on the survey, but they, again, it came back as the younger kids would still play pickleball, and then the multi-use that we talked before, where it had like interchangeable floors, so they could ice skate in the winter, they could roller skate, or you could do pickleball, so something where some sort of interchanging, like, so you can actually get like a lot of different stuff, I think would be, but would also need to be covered, I think we do that, that way it becomes more of like a all season sort of space for that kinda stuff, that's what, you know, the twelve to fifteen year olds seem to be like, just about, actually, so.
All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing. And move on to discussion action on sewer pump, it award.
This went out for bid a while ago, had a minimum bid on it, we received no bids, so the select board kicked it back to sewer commission, sewer commission said put it back out for bid, with no minimum, and we received four bids, the high bid was seven thousand five hundred dollars from Central Main Concrete, L O S.
So I move that we accept the Central Main Concrete bid of seventy-five hundred or the nineteen ninety-four International Pump Truck.
Uh, there's a motion.
A second.
There's a second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody.
You actually filed.
Perfect, okay, number twelve, uh, discussion regarding capital list.
Oh, what's my doing, just so everybody had seen it as a refresher, you know what's coming up. So we did a little bit of updating on this, and I'm sorry, didn't get out to you before today, uh, before right now, I guess I didn't use it out to you this morning. Um, so I did some updates here, I largely, it was a few shifts in the fire department, we've got the new sidewalk, multi-use machine at public works, so then it's a matter of the old tractor, which was a need, is now not really a need, doesn't have a note next to it. Is now not really a need, doesn't have a note next to it, uh, and then we did some adjustments on project dates or whatnot, um. In terms of when it would look to be replaced. Um, you don't really have too too much on here that has immediate budget implications, I think the fire department will address some of that with you. They gave you their most recent list, I think in March or April of this year, uh, and that is reflected in here, um. But naturally, when it comes by the time, things get pushed out and. The one new thing that came from the department as of right now was a public works. And they have that red pickup truck that they purchased from sewer a few years back, it's a two wheel drive pickup truck. It's seen better days, it's struggling to get a sticker and the department would like to have that replaced with something that could approve truck. Um, where they can put four guys into it and get out, nothing fancy, um, and so that's the only thing that's in. Is like a new request, so to say, since the last time that you've seen this, so I put a placeholder fifty thousand, I don't really know, but, um. We've got to start ramping up Public Works reserve anyway, because they've got one truck that really should be replaced in twenty twenty six. And then the pair of trucks that you purchased just before I got here, uh, is now coming to age, so. If you have things you wanna add, add things you wanna change, uh, add things you wanna change or update, let me know. It's kind of a living list, but.
Did you just buy a fire hose washer?
Uh, no, right, there was a, they, it was approved, it was, it was approved with them, we, yes, uh, there was a supply chain.
Supply chain or design change, I can't remember. Todd would know, uh, but there was.
They were two vendors and then one of them couldn't operate or manufacture in the way that they wanted to, and then it was. Changes in specifications and so the decision was to hold, yeah, so. They have TIF funding supporting that purchase, already secured and approved.
What are you talking about?
A fire hose washer.
Oh.
What's a fire turnout gear instructor?
The washing machine to turn up there.
Uh, so, do we know if we've decided whether we're going to keep a grader? Farm that out?
So, uh, our grader right now has been, knock on fake wood, decent to us.
Was there today when I saw it?
Uh, Rodney and the crew are maintaining it and they're making it work for us. I think that's a road committee discussion, more than a administration slash public works discussion. Because the road committee wants to cover up on some gravel. We're looking at Big Little Hill Road is one of those ones that's on the list, that can be covered by, uh, CBS money. That was estimated at four hundred and fifty thousand, so bump that up for inflation, another five, five twenty five, but that's a long section of road, that's. High traffic, high speed, and then you've got around the roots, and the roots, the concern, yeah, but can you justify keeping the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars piece of equipment? On hand for that.
Mike, please, gentlemen.
No, I just, does anybody have, at the, at the municipal department, do you have a number in which it's cost, which you figure costs the town right now? Two grade each level road that is gravel? Because that would help justify. If if the grader, to replace that grader is gonna be. Probably half million dollars purchase when it comes, so I'm just was wondering if we have any numbers to. Look at, so we can say, oh geez, if we hired a grader, if we hired it three times a year, whatever, by the hour.
Right, no, that's what you're getting at there, yeah.
And had some estimates so we could cost analysis as to whether it would be.
It would be really tough.
We don't have, we, our goal was always to get as a broken. I've been there, wow, too many years now, but the whole goal was to get as much of the gravel covered as possible, because it was. More efficient way of maintaining the roads on a yearly basis, so I just would like to know if we had some analysis of. Per, per year, how much it costs us per year to maintain.
Kinda hard, would be interesting to get a, a price from our current, uh, raider sub or the sub that the state uses for all their grading. Just to see what it would cost us to have all sections of the grader done by someone else.
It would be nice to have some numbers, so that you can. Do we need, like you said, going forward each year, we put all pavement down and less, less gravel, how relevant is that piece of equipment? It used to be very normal.
Right, well, we've done away with quite a bit of.
Yes, we decreased that, we decreased our.
That grader having a big issue with mobile transportation, we.
I think it's all rust, isn't it, it's just been eaten.
It's forty years old.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
And it's not so much about the cost of grading the road as it is trying to justify the half a million dollars it's gonna cost to replace it.
No, I.
Cause we, cause forty years ago, if you look at what we had for mileage on of gravel roads forty years ago as opposed now, what, what do we have now, we have? We have, uh, Red Bond, we have Upper Beach. Around the loop.
Independence.
Independence, yeah, okay.
Ballma Z.
Huh?
Ballma Z.
Ballma Z, yeah, and Big Old.
No, you've got.
And Oak.
And McIntyre and Donaldin.
Yes.
So I have a Wildwood Hill that stretch.
No, there's nothing on the Wildwood Hill that's all good, except for the first stretch, you know, we got a lane, we got fans for that anyways.
Yeah. Yep. We still got a little bit.
Yes.
But it would be good to see that number.
I'm the average on that grader. Have any idea?
Gotta be a bear mom.
Forty years old, you gotta grab it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, that it would, it would be good.
If we could just, before we jump into anything like that, if we could just do all homework on that, it would be totally.
I also made a, I'm gonna get a price on comparable grader, if we went and bought one.
It's so scary.
I know, I know what's going on.
Is it any sense of these state auctions anymore, I mean, there used to be years ago.
We never buy anything used.
Well, a few years ago, they bought, they, um, I know a guy that bought a really nice grader. Like Wisconsin or something like that, it came out, it was. Like brand new grader and it got a couple hundred thousand dollars off the price of it. It probably is something out there that would do us, would be upgrading greatly, but you.
You wanna do your homework for your game.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You don't have any warranty with, you don't have any warranty with secondhand equipment, and it doesn't take long for you.
No, no, essentially, you want to send cash.
I do not know that.
Me either.
But Ronnie ain't a boy no more.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, I know he now. It would've gone down to him forever.
He's got a little versary now.
Well, I know he is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, no, right on, so we'll, yeah, no, we'll definitely look into that.
Because like a Ronnie Chaser does something, he's eighty-five years old.
See anything else that was?
The only thing I I saw that was like the town office get painted again, the interior, didn't we just?
Where, sorry, there was a. There's a very, very large.
Town office paint interior?
Yeah, sorry, that was done, that was, I started to explode this old line.
Okay, project, okay.
So those are things I pulled out, that I didn't even address. Morning, yeah. Right now, we're looking at, I mean, it's flooring is the thing. Don't look down, especially out of the old end, but it's just like, how do you justify that when you don't necessarily know what your picture's gonna be in ten years?
Yeah.
So.
Got five hundred thousand milli fire truck, if that's what's in the works right now, right?
We're on this contract for that.
Yeah.
I feel like what constant by fire.
Well, there's a, another truck coming right up.
Yeah. The next bracket, the next year, well, it's gonna be starting next year, but I think it was the twenty thirty.
Companies needs those things.
Thirty, it's got thirty.
Twenty thirty, he's got a, uh, conversion of body replacement. In twenty-seven, but the twenty thirty would be a replacement and, uh, on the paper, that's, that's a point that's about two, did you get a discount if you bought two pickup trucks at the same time? You do, but five hundred would take different tracks than any of them, yeah, that's, yeah, sorry, valid.
Okay, nothing else jumping at me, I, you definitely wanna just look it over, see if we're missing something or something you guys feel that we should be looking at a bit more. Um, I just wanna make sure everybody's seen it, it's been a little while since I had laid eyes on it.
It helps create a greater justification for reserve fund requests.
Yeah.
We'll be starting to land through that, because it's easy to say, well, that's just our savings account, we don't need to put it in there, but I think this helps to demonstrate.
Sure, yeah, yeah, with the whole thing with like the parks.
How much winter, I know, I should ask, well, how much winter sand did they use in that, I know it varies. I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'd ju. Has it gone down any since the Mottai roads, because every winter is different.
With the dollars that we spent on sand.
Dollar is a, um, because.
Yeah, also, even if like the actual.
What do you think the dollar is on sand for the season? I'm not gonna hold you, just give me a dollar mark here.
I don't, it's forty or fifty grand between salt and sand, really.
Yeah, every season, which idea I get, you see those salt numbers.
The problem is that the nature of the storms are changing, we're doing a lot less plumbing and a lot more.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I mean, if we could get that number, Peter keeps pretty close track of the salt inbound, because that's always the question that you ask when we pair ones, bro, how many of those salt is this? So he has a counter to that, but we could go back and look at sand, we've taken delivery of a little bit for it.
Come here again.
No, but it's nice to know.
Because you do. Cause every year is gonna be different, no matter what.
Yes, no, for sure. Uh, okay, anything else on this, uh, again, please, just take your time, look at it, give it some thought, uh, so we'll move on to other visits.
We need this added to the agenda.
Uh, I get a couple things, can I get discussion action on appointments added to the agenda?
Motion and a second, uh, any discussion, say none, all those in favor, say everybody.
Yeah, we're supposed to be to appoint Nate Goff as North Representative to Scottvegan Area Cal Ripken Board of Directors.
So moved.
A second, motion and a second, uh, any discussion?
I, thanks for doing it, Nate.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Take it on for the team.
Okay, all those in favor, and that's everybody.
Yeah.
Next would be discussion action on appointment confirmation to the agenda.
So moved.
Motion, second, any discussion, say none, all those in favor, say everybody.
Uh, our code enforcement officer provided us with two weeks' notice last Tuesday, uh, so next Tuesday, I would like to. Finalize the appointment of Dawn and Avery as code enforcement officer. Uh, he is from Madison, he presently serves the town of Mercer, uh, Rome. And a couple others floating in between, I think Clinton is one as well, uh, he is willing to give us a nine to five. Uh, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, he's already certified by code enforcement, he's already certified in, um, plumbing. Uh, he would like to keep Dave Savage on, uh, to help him, obviously, Dave has a tremendous amount of experience. He would catch him on through the course of everything anyways, he's got valuable asset, something worth, so, um. That's kind of where I'd like to be, I, obviously, I live in Rome, so I hear things about how he is with the public, uh, it sounds as though he's very willing to work with folks. But not a fragile force at the same time, and so I think that that's a good value to us, I've had a discussion with him about our junkyards. And that, you know, we wanna see movement on that and other land use violations, and he's very understanding of that, um, and. Apparently, my father's on the planning board in the town of Rome, and he works very closely with them in a far more involved. Role than what we've customarily had here in the past, and that has been positive, so those are all three big things, I think that, uh, he brings a value here to the town of.
He can do that much and still have Madison and all them other towns?
He's not doing Madison, he's doing Rome two days a week.
Oh.
And then he floats Mercer and Clinton and I.
Oh, he said he's from Madison.
Yes, yeah, sorry, um, but that's just what happens nowadays, when you have somebody that's worked for multiple towns, he's gonna be in our code office answering questions for another town. And you know, that's just what you do, because when they're, when they're in that other town and I pick up the phone, they're gonna take my phone call and they're gonna help you out, so. It's a very valuable, but my request to you would be to confirm the appointment of him. His code enforcement officer effective October twenty second.
Motion? Second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that's everybody.
Uh, discussion, uh, motion to add discussion action on TIF expenditures to the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion, say none, all those in favor, say everybody.
I'm doing a little bit of events around the TIF committee. How was, they had this project in front of them at their last regular meeting, they were supportive of it, they saw the design of it, they were pleased with it. And they thought that it was a reasonable expensive expense, it was less than ten thousand dollars. So we have the design layout, it's in packet, I have the price from private signs, it was the same vendor that did a very good draw that gateway signage, but we did back in twenty seventeen. So that is gonna be a double sided sign, it's gonna, will do better than any, there is two, that would replace the existing sign, two thousand eight oh six. And then we could then go back and look for additional panels to swap them, it's gonna help, and if that expense is approved tonight, I expected it to be fully installed before end of day on Saturday.
So everything's proposed, everything?
Everything, we added on the.
Are we doing anything or?
Nope.
They're doing it.
We learned for big safe and that was all good.
Remembered that we expect the. Wow, what if, what if.
The dollar is expensive up to twenty eight oh six from the TIF fund for purchase and installation of the new sign in Uso Park.
So moved.
Okay, motion, second, uh, any discussion?
Is there, I think this is gonna look really nice, is there, I don't know how much of like the land we own around there, but is there any way to build some like. Fencing along the driveway in, cause I feel like if you don't spend a lot of time down there, you kind of feel like you're driving into the bottle reduction place.
I'm gonna create some separation, you can farm a little in the redemption.
Yeah, just kind of like, hey, there's a park here, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's any way to kind of. Create more of a divide between that path down to this nice park that we're putting a lot of effort and.
Valid.
You know, it's, it just, it doesn't.
Where do you?
Well, I have to go.
With our entries.
Isn't all that to the right to belong to?
Yes.
To, to the Dan people or whatever.
Well.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Nor belongs to the power company.
Yeah, for me, yeah.
But we have a lease on that.
Could you put another entrance in there?
Wait, I don't understand, like, where do you wanna put a fence?
I wanna dr, feel like I'm driving into the park, not like I'm driving into the bottle reduction place, admittedly, I'm sure they're great. But it looks, it doesn't match the vibe I think we're going for.
Yes.
It's not inviting.
Yes, yes.
It's almost like they would need a driveway that was the road going into the park and then they would need a driveway going that way in order.
Do they all want in front of them?
No.
They don't, they don't, right?
Got an idea like what's underneath a lot of.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay.
That's all.
It's something like, I think it was like plantings or something like that, like, you know.
Something right, something.
I don't know, just something that's like, hard.
Yeah, well, the other thing too, like the sign looks great, but like, you know. Is there any way to have it so it's like lit up and things like that, should I like uplighting and with something like that, like, do we look at sort of landscaping on the entrance into, you know. Uh, or does create a divide coming in, something like that, so that you, you know.
So, so uplighting is frowned upon.
Why?
It's bad for the sky, who is.
Yeah.
It's also bad, it's also a bad neighbor.
What, on this, like the little one, just little ones on the sign?
Yes, downward lighting is what site review calls for on commercial property.
Really?
We are.
We are.
We're gonna be downward lighting, we will be, I asked the sign vendor about it, about downward lighting, it would be solar, because it's. Cost prohibitive to drop service up there, just to light the sun, so we're gonna be looking at creative solar solutions that would downward light that end, and I think there's. Validity to planters of some sort, even if we have to water them on the regular, and then I think what we do need to have the honest review of is delineation.
Yeah.
Because if it was any other public street, which it is, we'd have a very big concern with a commercial property. Having that license of an entrance and an exit, and we had almost incidents at Usula Days and other events down there where trailer trucks just come in and make themselves a home. Things like that, so not to be anti-business, but I think that there's a lot of validity to curving the revolution.
Oh, yeah, it would be good for both, I, it's not singling them, no, I really, it's, it's warranted and if we can help with that.
Yeah.
Why not?
So don't make it harder to drive a boat trailer.
Right, uh, Mike, go ahead.
I don't even interrupt, but if, if. The ability to, what about maybe adding another entrance, because in the summertime, the boat traffic in there, there's a lot of traffic in there going in and out, boat trailers. And you could maybe put another entrance further down and loop into the parking area that they use in the field, and that would actually help what she's.
Yes, yes.
I just wonder if that's gonna be super costly, but it's going in.
I'm not saying it's the best, maybe, maybe, it would, especially in Usula Days, things like that, we, you know, that that park has got a lot of traffic into it. In the summertime and the boat traffic and stuff, and it might. If you had that as being an entrance and this being an exit.
Right.
And actually had like one way traffic going in and out of there, that might, what you're, what you're talking about, about the separation, then we wouldn't have the hot bird. It would be easier to loop around, but that may not be something that would be.
They're gonna get D O P, you know.
Well, the D O P is gonna have to, you know, yeah, absolutely, and it's, if it's in the flood plain and all this, so I'm not sure where.
You got ball bowl there too.
Right, so I'm not sure where this is even possible, I'm just asking, it would make a nice, it would make everybody down there as a boat. Who's down there watching the boat, it would make that a whole lot easier, more user friendly, and you could present it in a better way.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I certainly, that warrants some looking into, so that's right.
But it would be a fun.
Richard and Michelle definitely look into that.
I think. The road committee has a place to play, very likely that when we, well, when we.
Run your butt in.
For the congressionally directed spending, random, it's two hundred, two and a half million dollars for. It was to mitigate our roadway impact on the water.
Yeah.
And that is probably, aside from where the two roads that we're fixing right now, our roads are going into the river. There's probably no greater point of non-point source pollution.
Yeah, yeah.
Than the Farid road.
Yeah.
And all of the gravel and the road treatment materials, they go right down Farid road, right down the boat launch in and there. And I think that could be a creative way to pave crown and mitigate through plantings and other things like that, the impact on the water.
I think if we look a lot, I mean, a presentation of, cause right now. It's just Alders, it's just over, it's uncapped that whole front area, cause it's so wet and it's difficult. Even though we don't be able to clean that whole area up. They. Give you what you're, and it gives the floor traffic. Much easier access to the boat.
Well, it would make that corner a lot less secluded too, so you're not so prone to go parkway in the corner where nobody's gonna come by, if that's the exit. You're gonna drive, every vehicle's gonna drive right by you, so that really could kill a lot of birds with a single stone, so. Not a, not a bad idea, I just wonder how plausible it is.
Maybe, really, it's gonna take a lot of good birth control.
It's kind of, kind of, that's, that's. Don't approach any of those cars in that corner for that reason. So, no, that's not a bad idea, really.
And 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 in there. You might expand, you might actually. Create a parking area that's not just grassy parking that, you know, I don't know, I just, I'm just looking at this as, it's got a lot of possibility, cause you do have a lot of people that. That, if you go down there any, any weekend, any weekend you go down there. In the summertime, there is this, it's 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 all vehicles, so I mean. If we could get some way to be creative with funding that, that's not my apartment, but I mean, it just seems like it could be an upgrade to.
Yeah, yeah, really.
I just think we're, we're investing a lot down there, with like the docks and the park and the the kayaks and the music series and. Being new to Nord Rock, I've never wanted to drive down there, cause I didn't, I, you can't see the park from there, you know what I mean, I was like, I don't know what that is. And the sign, I think it's a huge improvement.
Yeah.
But then also the like, just the aesthetic of it, like making it look like a space, you wanna go and bring your kids.
We're trying, you know, are the other things you guys doing, we're trying to bring people to our, and create events in which you want people down there. Putting a fresh foot on it.
Yeah.
Would be interesting.
Like, yeah.
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 Yeah, good idea.
Uh, what was your fair or moving up to catalyst?
I don't know, we're gonna walk to this right now.
I don't have.
Uh, okay, uh, does the board have anything else, brother? You heard, you think, you know.
About what?
Oh, I don't know what you call it, up a more, up a blah blah blah, up a main street there.
No, no, hazard mitigation, I have not, I do know that we closed out a category A, which is a pretty removable project last week. And I signed off on that, I think that was about thirty-eight thousand dollars, it's coming in reimbursement, but that'll be another six months or so. It really, really, really slow, and then once we get through that, it sits with NEMA for a good while.
Okay, thank you.
The money's coming back, project development isn't really happening and it's not gonna get any better as long as Florida keeps behaving the way that they did.
So we don't move it on that for all and.
No. Yeah.
All right, anything else for the board? Uh so that just leaves agenda.
I move to agenda.
Second, motion, second, any discussion, say none, all those in favor, say everybody.